Boy, what a day. I went for a walk in Seventeen Mile Drive. God, it was gorgeous out there today. Perfect. No one was out there.
You've been hiking all over the place, Bobby.
Yeah.
My favorite was when you walked over from here to the airport for lunch.
Oh, my gosh.
And then I walked, I walked from the airport to Pacific Grove the other day.
How do you get, how do you walk from here to the airport? I know how to bike there, but not how to walk there.
Well, Aguahito and Aguahito to...
Mahalo.
Yeah. But then for Pacific Grove, I went to like Airport, Santa Catalina Naval Postgraduate School, the Wharf, Canary Row in Pacific Grove.
What a great walk.
That was awesome.
Well, that noted, it is 4:30. It is still May 3rd. So why don't I call this meeting to order? Britt, if we could get a roll call, I would appreciate, excuse me, May 4th. Yesterday was the 3rd. It seemed like it went on forever, but it passed. Britt, if we could get a roll call, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Councilmember Barron?
Here.
Furleto?
Here.
Tice?
Here.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Here.
Mayor Potter?
Yeah.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. We can deduct tonight's business then. We have two items under extraordinary business. One is a resolution, proclamation, acknowledging. May 2nd through the 8th is Municipal Clerks Week. I'm going to read the resolution. And I can tell you, I know all my council members agree with that. One of the most vital positions we have is the clerk to the board, or to the council. So whereas the office of professional municipal clerk is a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of professional municipal clerk is the oldest, not Britt, is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local government bodies, and agencies of government at all levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal services to all. Whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of so local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerk, clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Where it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that I, Dave Potter, mayor of the City of Carmel by the Sea, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Carmel, hereby proclaim May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Britt Everett, and to all professional municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their extraordinary dedication to the community they respect, represent. Signed, Dave Potter, Mayor. Britt?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Britt. Really do appreciate your services. You've been a most professional. It's my pleasure. I know the council agrees to see you on a regular basis, and you really facilitate the operation of the government. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any comments by council members?
Yes, I would like to comment.
Certainly, and then Jeff.
I think Britt has shown just remarkable poise and care and handling during this very difficult time. And has, has been polite and kind, and I just can't say enough about her service this year. So I'm really pleased that this is Clerk Week. I do hope you get to enjoy some of it without a million emails coming in to forward to us. But thank you again for your service. It really is appreciated.
Jeff, did you say something?
Yeah, I would just echo Karen said way better than I could have. So, so ditto for Karen's comments, and thank you for everything that you do, Britt. You're spectacular, and it's great to have you as part of the team.
Thank you.
Carrie?
Yes, I very much appreciate your professionalism, and it's been nice working with you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bobby?
Yeah, Britt, I, you know, I just love, I love coming in the office and seeing you and working with you, and you're just, you've always been so helpful. And Lancaster's loss is definitely our gain. So thank you, Lancaster, for giving you such great training.
Thank you.
Well said, you guys. All right, Bob, I hope everybody has those nice things to say about you.
Keep the bar a little high.
So the next, the next resolution, proclamation recognizes May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week. Stronger Together is the motto. So Bob, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Carmel by the Sea. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, public buildings, storm brain system, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas it is, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the Sea of Carmel by the Sea to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st, also marks my 34th year of recognizing this occasion, Annual Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that I, Dave Potter, mayor of the City of Carmel by the Sea, will hereby designate the week of May 16th through 22nd, 2021, as Public, National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Now witness whereof, in witness whereof, I have hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Carmel by the Sea to be affixed, done at the City of Carmel by the Sea, California, this 4th day of May, 2021. Sign, Dave Potter, Mayor of Carmel by the Sea. Bob, and one thing I enjoyed about Public Works Week was the Public Works Department always threw great barbecues. There was at the City of Monterey, it was the city, the county, we always got together, had a nice big old tri-tip. I'm looking forward to that, Bob. Don't let me down.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, for the, for reading the proclamation. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the hard work, Bob. I know it's thankless at times. Carrie?
I just want to, big shout out to Public Works. Despite COVID, you, your team has really worked around all the, the social distancing, and you've gotten a heck of a lot of stuff done. So, you know, some people have COVID as an excuse not to get things done. On the contrary, the Public Works team has really gotten a lot done, and I appreciate that because I know it hasn't been easy. So thank you, Bob and your team.
All right, thank you very much. If I may, Mayor, really a shout out to the volunteer groups. We did have, we cut back on our resources this past year, and it has been tough. But we've had a number of organizations and volunteers that have stepped up and really helped us out. So certainly appreciate that.
Appreciate that acknowledgement, Bob. Jeff, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just again, in second place, I would just echo what Carrie said. Thank you for reading that entire proclamation, Dave. It really sounds like something that Bob wrote for himself. I'm not quite sure exactly how this process works. Thank you for being a part of it.
Karen and then Bobby?
Yes, I'd just like to say I have enjoyed knowing Bob a little better this year, and I enjoy your wit. I think you have great ability to, to lighten up some of the situations that we've had to deal with over the last year. Yet your professionalism has been terrific. And I'd also like to make a shout out to Rob Culver in Mission Trail Nature Reserve. Rob is just a fantastic employee, as are all the employees that I have interacted with through Public Works. They, they work hard. They do all kinds of tasks, from picking up garbage during the picnicking part of the city this year, to digging holes for trees, replacing things, fixing things. Cleve is amazing, Leo, all of them. It's just a pleasure to work with your crew. I enjoy it, and I enjoy working with you, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen.
I convey all of the council's comments to your crew. Thank you.
Bobby?
Yeah, I would just say, Bob, your team has such great attitudes throughout this whole thing, and I think that comes right from the top and your department, which is you. So thanks, good, great job. And I know you get caught in between a lot of crossfire, and you handle it well, and you keep your head held high. And thank you for doing the job that you're doing, and you, your team too. Thank them.
Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate it.
Brian, Bob, it'd be nice if some people actually realized they didn't live in the City of Carmel when they come forward with comments. All righty, that noted, we've done our job today, and I want to thank both of you guys for your service. Most appreciated. Next item is public appearance. It's an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Three-minute limitation on that testimony. If you'd state your name for the record, I'd appreciate it. Is anybody wishing to speak tonight?
I'll speak. This is Dale.
Dale?
Go ahead, Dale.
Okay. Before I get started, I'd like also to thank our good friends with the Public Works Department. They're great. Sorry about the ambulance. Police Department too, they're great. Good evening, Mayor Potter and council members. I'm Dale Burns, speaking as the project manager for the Carmel Gives Fund. I wanted to update everyone on the total... Total success of our Carmel Restaurant Food Production Grant Program. Like so many other innovative efforts that took place over the past year, this program was created out of a desire to assist our local restaurants and to simultaneously assist those who needed nourishment. This program was the epitome of what win-win looks like and feels like as it accomplished both goals. The grant program provided a total of $150,000 in grants to local restaurants, who in turn produce nutritious meals for individuals and groups needing assistance. Over 7,000 meals were created and delivered to more than 20 organizations and local homebound seniors since December 24th. In addition, Mission Bistro partnered with Meals on Wheels to prepare bulk foods that were turned into 6,000 tasty meals delivered on, to Meals on Wheels recipients. Frontline caregivers at Salinas Valley Hospital and CHOMP were also treated to special meals prepared by restaurants in Salinas and Monterey. As we wind down the program this week, we at Carmel Gives would like to thank our generous donors, volunteers, local restaurants, and nonprofits throughout the peninsula for helping to make it a great success. Anthony, Chef Todd, Kathy, Kenny, Courtney, and Kurt, Mira and Ashley, Shaheen, Juliana and Lydia, Dennis, Pepe, Kathleen, Katie, Ryan, Giuseppe, Sarah, Brett, Anna, and many more came through each week with incredible meals that benefited thousands. Bruno's and our enthusiastic volunteer Angela helped me with deliveries. The essential nonprofits who partnered with us included Genesis House, Boys and Girls Club, Bethel Baptist Church, Shoreline Church, Pueblo Del Mar Recovery Community, Gathering for Women, I Hope Men and Women, Casa de Noche Buena, Arkwright, Seaside Seventh Day Adventist, Windows on the Bay Homeless, and the Seaside RV Encampment. Finally, we'd like to thank Mackenzie and the other incredible folks at the Community Foundation who coached us through the process of creating and executing the grant program, and Jenny McMurdo from Carmel Chamber of Commerce, who acted as our fiduciary partner. And without Carmel Gives and Tim Allen's vision and support, none of this would have happened. It's been an honor to pair up challenged restaurants with people in need and create a network of cooperation that benefits all our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else wishing to speak tonight? Britt, what do you think?
Not seeing any hands.
All righty, well, I will dare to assume then that the public comment period is closed. That brings us on to the consent calendar. There's two items on consent. Councilmembers, Jeff, you have a concern?
Yeah, I would like to pull for discussion, item number two, the special event ordinance.
All right. Is there anybody else on council wishing to pull an item? Karen?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment about number one.
Is it a comment only?
That only.
Okay. Why don't I go ahead and see if there's anybody in the public wishing to speak tonight? Anybody in the public wishing to speak tonight on the consent calendar? All right, see no one. Bring it back. Karen, why don't you make a comment on number one? We can move that item, and then we'll bring number two back separately.
Yes, I'd just like to make a comment that when we did a last round of paving, and I walked some of Hennepin with the project manager and also with Chip, we talked about future paving projects being cognizant of opportunities for traffic calming, tree planting, and removal of excess asphalt in the public right away. So I just wanted to put that little reminder in when we start these paving projects that we need to be looking for those opportunities to make our pavement sensitive to our village and help with calming the traffic and more room for trees. So thank you very much. I'm sure Bob is listening to that. So thank you.
Appropriately noted, Karen. Thank you. Is there a motion then to approve item number one on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve item number one.
Motion and a second, I believe, by Furleto. Karen, did you second?
Yes.
Okay, good. Any other discussion? Britt, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Furleto?
Yes.
Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Hi.
Hey, item one is approved unanimously.
That brings us on to item number two. Item number two is an ordinance 2021-002, adding chapter 12.48, special events to the Carmel by the Sea municipal code. Jeff, you had a concern?
Yeah, so apologies for not really fleshing this out well enough last month. Over the course of the past couple of days, as we've been discussing the concourse on the avenue, it's sort of, I've been reminded that the ordinance that we read last month, that we introduced last month, doesn't contain a section in it to allow, to allow an applicant that has been turned down by city staff after they've exhausted all of the, all of the staff level, staff level remedies to appeal, to appeal their no verdict to the city council. So I think that this would be a worthwhile addition to the ordinance. I have briefly spoken to the city attorney about the, the relation between, you know, the, the title limits that we have to abide by and the way that this might work. And I think he has a few words. So maybe we could have a little bit of a discussion about this and whether or not we think that this is a worthwhile addition to the ordinance.
Certainly. Brian?
Did you want me to speak at this point? Okay. Hi, hi. As Councilmember Barron did give me a heads up that this question might be coming up, thankfully. So I was able to craft some language. I'm a lawyer, so it's not a few words, but it's not too many. So if, I believe Ashley or Britt may have the PowerPoint. While that's coming up, hopefully the font's not too small. This would be the section F, like Frank, that's in 12.48060. Well, that's not bad. So it appears in your agenda packet as page 22. It is section 12.48.060. It previously read, appeals to the city administrator. So made a few changes. I broke it, that long paragraph into two long paragraphs. So the first one addresses the opportunity for, it wants the written notification is provided with regards to the application for the permit. They can file an appeal to the city administrator, and that will be determined based upon the facts upon which the appeal is, is based. And then the findings are required by subsection E. So some minor changes there. The more major changes occur on the next paragraph. So I'm going to, I think, read this paragraph, and we can all kind of reflect on it and discuss it. And as I say, the, the city clerk has this, so it can be incorporated into the ordinance. So here it goes. "The city administrator or designee, designees determination to grant or deny the appeal shall be the final decision of the city unless timely appealed by the applicant to the city council by filing a notice of appeal with the city clerk within 10 days of the decision of the city administrator. The city council shall consider any such timely appeal at the next regularly scheduled council meeting unless the appeal is filed within 10 days of the next regularly scheduled council meeting, in which case such appeal shall be heard at the subsequent regular meeting." So let me just pause and insert a comment here. The reason for that was, we didn't want to be in a situation where, you know, the appeal came in just a couple of days before a council meeting, and then we were rushing around trying to, you know, prepare a staff report with regard to the item. And, and so this gives a window, if you will, of, of 10 days. And if it's filed within those 10 days, it would roll over to the next meeting. So continuing with the text. "On appeal, the city council shall consider the application de novo," and what that means is anew, "and shall approve the application unless the city council makes one or more of the findings for denial set out in subsection E of this section 12.48060, and shall exercise the authority of the reviewing authority to impose conditions of approval in accordance with this chapter." So I believe that captures the essence of what the council may or may not wish to consider here, which is in, in shorter terms, an opportunity for the applicant to file an appeal from the administrative decision to the council. And I'm available to answer questions if there are any.
Are there any questions by council? I don't have a problem with the language. I just think that I would be uncomfortable waiving the second reading tonight, since this is substantive changes to the agenda that the public has not viewed. So for that reason, it's either we continue the first read of it so the public can digest it, or we have a second read so that it is part of the public review process.
Yeah, you, you anticipated that, that issue very well. I, I agree with you. We should not do a second reading tonight. This is not just a minor change. So my advice, if this language is acceptable to the majority of the council, that there be a motion to amend the ordinance, to add the revised language, and to reintroduce the ordinance as amended. And if you want, you can say what the city attorney said for your motion. And then I would also read the title once again. So we would start with me reading the title, and then the motion as I described it in my comment there.
Let me see if there's anybody in the public that's interested in this item tonight. Is there anybody in the public that would you like to speak to this item tonight? If so, please do. Stay named for the record. Three-minute limitation. Not surprised. All right, why don't we close the public comment period, bring it back for direction? Jeff, what's your level of comfort?
My level of comfort, I think I was able to follow it, was, was pretty high. So I would, you know, if, if it's the council's wish, I would be prepared to make a motion.
Good. Motion, and one of the second for discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Under discussion. I'm, I'm supportive of this. I always thought that it was better that the council have the last decision on appeals, very much like the planning commission process. So I appreciate your scrutiny here, Jeff. I think it was appropriate.
So I would, so I would make a motion to ask the city attorney to read, let me see if I can get this right, ask the city attorney to read the title of the ordinance, waive, waive further reading of the ordinance, then move to amend the ordinance with the, with the included languages displayed by the city attorney. I'm not going to get this right.
Actually, you did, you did very well. That's exactly...
Move to, move to amend the ordinance and reintroduce said ordinance. Is that good?
Yep. That, that's, that's fine. So the first step...
Understanding that there's a second read coming up.
Yes, this is just a reintroduction, which is the first reading.
Good.
That's correct, Mayor. And then we would bring it back to you at your meeting in June for your second reading.
Great.
I'll second that.
Well done.
All right, so I'll read the title, and then you can vote on the motion. So this is an ordinance of the city council of the City of Carmel by the Sea to enact chapter 12.48, special events ordinance, hub the Carmel by the Sea municipal code.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. We have any other discussion? Seeing none, Britt, would you call the roll?
Mayor? I just have a question about, okay, we talked about multi-year permitting and all of those things. None of that language is in here. Or if it is, it just says that we are not going to allow that. Every event has to come back every year. So like the Run of the Name of Love, which is normally on Father's Day every year, is not guaranteed Father's Day the next year. Is that correct?
That's right.
And that's, and that's what this council wants. We want that no event gets, no historical event gets a future date, gets, gets assured that future date if there's not a problem with the event.
I would, I would say that's not necessarily a consensus of the council. I don't think we've debated that type against, in its entirety. I think it's an action we can bring forward for an amendment if we wanted to so do. Am I correct, Brian?
Yes.
Okay, so what I would suggest is, Bobby, who've expressed an interest in that, can agendaize it for another meeting, or we could have some discussion also about it at our retreat next week. Yeah?
I would be up for that discussion as well.
Sure, good. All righty, we have a motion with a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Britt, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Furleto? You're muted, Karen.
Pushing the wrong button. Yep.
Councilmember Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Hi.
Hey, it passes with five yes votes.
Good. All right, this moves us on to the normal orders of business for the evening. First item is number three, which is an ordinance 2021-001, amending sections 228.030, 2.228.060, point 22 dash 3, 2.32 dash 030, 2.36.030, 2.72.030, 2.474.010. The Carmel by the Sea municipal code related to timing of board and commission appointments and updating the Community Activities Commission mission statement and resolution 2021-014, amending policy C89-06, appointments to boards and commissions. All right.
All right, Mayor, this is my item. Good evening, Mayor Potter, city council members. Before you again this evening is the ordinance that the mayor just discussed, which changes the timing for appointing the members of the city's boards and commissions. As I mentioned last month, this was brought up originally in October, and then in December, council requested that the staff bring back the change for the timing of the appointments. Previously, the appointments were made in October of each year because of the April general municipal election. Now that we have our elections in November, it's appropriate to change the appointments to May so that the council has time to get seated and conduct the recruitment process. I worked with the city attorney's office to update the various sections of the municipal code. With the changes to the municipal code, we also need to change the associated policy. As I mentioned last month, the policy also has been updated to reflect how we would handle unexpected vacancies. And the vacancies, unexpected vacancies would be handled the same way. We'd open a recruitment, but we would also be able to have the subcommittee be able to use the previous applications from the most recent recruitment in order to more efficiently replace and handle filling the unexpected vacancies. The ordinance tonight also includes some verbiage from the Community Activities Commission, who in April revised their mission statement. And so since the agenda or the ordinance was brought back from last month, this was a good time to go ahead and add that verbiage. this was a good time to go ahead and add that verbiage as well. And I can answer any questions if there are any.
But I appreciate the housecleaning item. Thank you very much. Is there any questions by council members before I open up to the public? Seeing no one. Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item tonight? I'm going to assume nobody. All right, close the public comment period, bring it back for board direction. Councilmembers? Jeff?
Yes, I would just like to give another shout out. You know, Britt, you've already gotten one shout out this meeting, and here's another one. Thank you for, for fixing the issues that I found last month.
Sure.
Anything else? The motion approved then?
Yeah, I would do number, step one, request a reading of the title of the ordinance.
Okay.
And then, should I go on? And then a motion to waive the further reading and introduce ordinance 2021-001, amending sections 2.28.030, 060, 2.32.030, 2.36.030, 2.72.030, and 2.74.010 of the Carmel by the Sea municipal code related to timing of board and commission appointments and updating the community activities commission mission statement. Then number three, adopt a resolution 2021-014, amending policy C89.06, appointments to boards and commissions. So I guess we could have.
So I'll, I'll read the title. So we'll have it three times. This is ordinance, an ordinance of the, it's ordinance number 2021-001, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Carmel by the Sea, amending sections 2.28.030, 2.28.060, 2.32.030, 2.36.030, 2.72.030, and 2.74.010 of the Carmel by the Sea municipal code related to the timing of board and commission appointments and updating the community activities commission mission statement. And then my advice to you is that you have separate votes on the ordinance and the resolution. So call first the ordinance.
All right, Jeff, you had a motion. Was that the ordinance approval?
Yeah, I would make a motion to waive further reading and introduce the ordinance as I described a minute ago.
And a second?
I'll still second it.
All righty. Motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, Britt, could you call the roll on this?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Forlito?
Yes.
Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Hey, that passes with five yes votes.
And then the subsequent motion?
Yeah, then I would move to adopt resolution 2021-014, amending policy C89-06, appointments to boards and commissions.
And I believe we have a second still standing, Bobby.
Yes.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Britt, can we call the roll?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Forlito?
Yes.
Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Right, it passes with five yes votes. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, and then is there one more action? No, okay, all right, good. All right, thank you. All right, then we'll move on now to item number five, four, which is resolution 20-21-, excuse me, 2021-017, authorizing the city administrator to restore voluntary compensation reductions in whole or in part to, for at-will executive and for classifications covered under the memorandum of understanding between the city of Carmel by the Sea and the city of, the Carmel by the Sea Police Officers Association. Sharon, are you handling this?
Mr. Mayor, I, I've got some, a couple of comments if, if you will, sir, and that'll be all. We'll, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
So I just, I just wanted to, first of all, again, apologize to the council that I got this, got this item incorrect on your April agenda. What we have, what you have before you are more options for you to choose from, but I, I would certainly be remiss if I, again, did not thank our Police Officers Association and the executives, my executive team, for stepping up last year and offering these voluntary compensation reductions to help balance the budget to the tune of almost $160,000. I was, I was reminded in, in the intervening month about something that Kathy Bang had sent to me and other people, kind of i- in the first third of the pandemic. And it was an, an article about, by, written by someone who talked about more so. I think it was entitled "More So." And, and the thought was that, that people who were thoughtful and generous and kind and hardworking pre-pandemic were more so in, in the, during the pandemic. And I think that that's exemplified by Mr. Burns, who spoke earlier, and Carmel Cares, and all our wonderful volunteers who have helped us get through the pandemic. And I, I thought of the employees who, who stepped up and really moved into a leadership position and helped us, again, balance the budget. So they were more so. They, they were more, more generous, more hardworking during the last year because of the pandemic or in spite of it. And I was quiet the last, the last hearing on this item, Mr. Mayor. And I, I just, I really wanted to come out and, and tell you that, again, in the intervening month, I have, I have received some inquiries about how the employees feel about this. And in a very informal attempt to me, for me to ask some of them, I can't tell you how grateful they are that the, the council would even consider, you know, this as an option and recognize their efforts. So I, I just, I wanted to share those thoughts with you, Mr. Mayor and council. And I can tell you that if, if this goes through, if we ever get into this kind of a situation again, these are the kinds of employees that we want. Because these, these are the kinds of employees who are going to show leadership and step up once again, I believe. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I can answer any questions about what we have before you. And if not, you're free to do your work, sir.
There are questions to chip by council members before I open this up to the public. Seeing none. Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item tonight? I don't hear anybody. Britt?
Not seeing any hands raised or any devices being unmuted.
All right. Close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for action. Councilmembers, your preference. Carrie?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate Chip's comments. I think that what we're looking at here is rewarding good behavior. We hope we don't have to be in another situation like we were with COVID and having to take such a hard look at the budget. But it really was nice that some of our employees, the POA and our executive staff, volunteered to take reductions in their COLAs. And I think that we want to be in a position next time that encourages people to do that. And since we did come out of this better than we expected, I think it's important to realize how hard these people have worked and to go back all the way to July 1st of 2020 to restore the salaries that we deferred.
Thank you, Carrie. Are there any other comments? Excuse me, not comments, but actually should have been questions.
I have a question for Chipman.
Bobby?
Yeah, Chip, if we were to go with, what is it, to the partial, would that, would there be enough money to bring employees back? If we were to do a partial?
So the, the total dollar amount, Mr. Richards, is, is, I believe, $158,000. The, the answer to your question would be, would depend on, on what position, what level position we would bring back.
Well, I, while I'm totally grateful, of course, what, what our executive team did and the POA team, I'm just concerned about the people that we laid off, and I would love to try to get them back to work.
All righty, trying to stand at the head of questions, my mistake in the beginning anyway. Anybody else with questions before I put this out to the public? All right, seeing no one. Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item tonight? Don't hear anybody. All righty. Bring it back to council for direction. Comments? Carrie?
I believe in the, the new budget, Chip is proposing some positions to come back. Is that correct, Chip?
Yes, ma'am. Correct, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right, Jeff?
Yes, I just, I share Carrie's sentiments regarding the employees and the same shout out to the POA and the management employees for all that she, all that they have done. Certainly, certainly, just very difficult times. Your work is just much appreciated, and I would be in support of, just like Carrie, I would be in support of options.
All right, Karen?
Yes, I would be supporting a motion to this effect because when, when it got rough, the employees that offered to do this stepped up without knowing whether they would be recompensated, without knowing where we were going. And it got us over a rough patch with a little extra money. So I, I think it's absolutely the right thing to do.
Felt like a motion to me.
Yes, I make a motion to do full retroactive, retroactive compensation, which will fully restore salary deferral and/or other compensation reductions incurred since July 1st, 2020.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none. Britt, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Forlito?
Yes.
Tice?
Pleasure.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Hey, it passes with five yes votes.
Thank you. Well done.
Mayor, this is Brian. I have an answer to a question that was asked on a previous item. If you would like to have me address that.
We're going to prolong the meeting aggressively, extensively?
No, it'll take, it'll take just a minute. It'll make council, it'll make Bobby Richards' period.
Okay, great, good. I want that. Bring it.
Yeah, well, that's, that's our goal. So this is item number two. That's the ordinance 2021-002. It's chapter 12.48 on special events. That chapter was written by Sergio, Rudy, of our office, and working with Ashley, right? And I checked in with Sergio on the question that Bobby had asked about, what about multi-year events? And his answer is, there is no prohibition on applying for events in advance. So if an organization wishes to receive a permit in advance for a particular event on a particular day, they can, they can so apply.
Thank you, Brian.
Much appreciated, Brian. Thank you. Very prompt. All right, with that noted, then we will move on to item number five on tonight's agenda, which is.